Meeting to order. Do we have any citizens or public comments?
I think Katie's phone wants to make a call.
(laughing).
That's it.
Katie's phone, your phone is flying.
Seeing no other comments. Welcome, everybody. Consideration of approval of the agenda.
So move, Your Honor.
Second.
Click and call a roll.
Jaeger, Griesman, Hammond, Malero.
Aye.
The den is approved as submitted. Consideration of approval of the minutes of the June 15, June 20, and June 27 meetings. So move, Your Honor.
What they report. Second.
Click and call a roll.
Griesman, Hammond, Malero.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye. Consideration of approval of the consent calendar. There's an approval of outdoor service for hot shots billiards. Don't want to take these separately?
No, we always do those together. He's actually here for the request down below.
So why is it up there?
Well, just because that's where we always put all the liquor license renewals.
You want us to debate it now?
We approve the claims.
Basically, how it goes, if we approve it here but don't approve it down there, it's basically kind of a wash essentially.
We discussed this at our planning session.
We know that. So you want to...
Yeah, we normally don't pull it out.
All right, thank you.
If you want to, we sure can.
Now, any other comments or discussion regarding these items at this point?
So move the consent calendar.
Second.
Click and call a roll.
Hammond, Malero, Jaeger, Griesman.
Aye.
Consent calendar is approved as submitted. Just as a matter of making people aware, because I think media was involved with this, the White House, acting through the Department of Agriculture, is working on getting funding for problems that are generated in the drug abuse area, prescription abuse in particular, as it relates with moving on to more serious drugs, heroin, and so on. So that all was being discussed in a half-hour audio conference that we had this morning. I was involved along with the sheriff from Story County and Secretary of Agriculture, Vilsack, and a parent who lost a child as part of this program. Just as a heads up, we were basically trying to call attention to the issue and generate more support for funding that would allow for more effective and greater amounts of treatment for these particular issues in the drug area. Any questions regarding any of that? Okay, next up, request from Joe Hull for use of city parking lot, July 30. Discussion.
Joe, if you want to, yeah, there we go. Step up to the 40M.
I did get a chance to talk to Brian at Aromas. He was actually pretty excited about the event, thought he'd gained some business there, and actually offered to sponsor it somewhat, so, as far as the bag tournament went. Deb, she didn't bother her one bit whether we would do this or not. So that should be, everybody in that parking lot area has agreed that it'll be fine that I go forward with this. As far as power goes, I can get it from Mid-American, but I'd be looking at just doing the generator from Perry Novak Electric, about the same price and a lot simpler. I think that's all that you guys really wanted me to...
Could you give a once-over of what your event is?
Yeah, I'm looking at July 30, having an outdoor beanbag tournament, DJ during the day, possibly running the dunk tank from the girls' softball team, and then live music into the night, looking at 7:00 to midnight or 1:00 in the morning for the band.
So you got all the neighbors agreeing to it?
Yes.
And you want part of that parking lot, major part of it, for the beanbag?
Yes.
We talked about this planning session, but it sounds like a good idea to me. See how it works.
What's the rules on the music, Steve, downtown, as far as time?
We don't have anything that...
I was thinking there was something somewhere. Like with the party in the park events and stuff like that, I was thinking it was usually like midnight, but...
I think that's always been our rule of thumb, if nothing else.
Yeah, that's just what I'm getting at. I mean, to me, if we're gonna, I would think we should kind of stick with some kind of standard.
It really doesn't matter to me. I mean, I'll just start the music an hour earlier, or hour earlier, or whatever.
Other discussion or questions?
I'd so move.
Any questions or discussion? Click and call a roll.
Malero.
Aye.
Jaeger, Griesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Okay, permission is granted.
All right, thank you.
Have fun.
Good luck.
Be safe.
Request for closure of a block of Milwaukee Street by car, for car show on July 30. Discussion.
This is Craig.
It's just me again, Craig Hamm. I forgot, and I needed a part of Milwaukee closed off, east side of the church. I already got Spriggs, but I need to get the Milwaukee side blocked off for the car show, the 30th of July.
Did you have that blocked off at the last event?
Just the north. This time, they want to do the east because there's a guy doing some housing revamp, and it's kind of an eyesore. So we'd like them both blocked off, and we'll use the north side just for overflow if we have.
You visited with PD, you got that okay with them?
Yep, I've talked to Hugh, and then I went to some more neighbors and told them about it and stuff, so I followed through.
Other questions or discussion? With any mind of move? Click and call a roll.
Jaeger, Griesman, Hammond, Malero.
Aye.
Thanks, guys.
Hope you have good weather.
Good luck. The quest is granted. Consideration of Resolution 58-16, setting public hearing and bid letting for Victory Park improvement. Discussion.
You're going to see before you an updated resolution. Brad drafted this up one that you have today, so if you want to use that to replace the one that was in your packets, Brad just goes into much better detail than our previous ones have, so... And we do have the date in there for the hearing. What was it again, John? September 18?
Bids will be taken on September 15 at 2:00 p.m., and then the hearing, the council meeting, 7:00 p.m. on the 19th of September.
Other questions or discussion?
So as far as the funding for what's going on as part of this resolution, Steve, is it going to come from where?
We have, as far as, I mean, there's outside funds coming into this, but the city itself, we have about right around $25,000 in funds that we've levied over the last couple of years and been holding on to for this project, so our portion of the funding will be coming from that amount of funds on hand.
And this is going to allow the project to go into 2017 with the thought of possibly getting better bids, allow some more time for it, correct?
And we're holding to two times a timeline, but we're hopeful it's a small enough project that somebody will be able to work it in this fall, but if not, they'll have until spring to get it done, and, you know, give us potentially some more bids that way, too.
Further discussion or questions?
I'd so move.
Click and call a roll.
Griesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Resolution 58-16 is approved.
I just go back, the statute's actually going to go in kind of ahead of all of this work.
Yeah, just, yeah.
Right.
The sculptor was here this last week, and they laid out the spot of where, how the sculpture's going to sit in that area. And here, in the next month, about mid-August, we're going to be pouring the footings, the footings for where the sculpture is actually going to be, and then this fall, the sculpture will be going in. But what we're talking about here, these are the planned specs for the amenities and things around the sculpture, the signage, and the walk paths and all that stuff. So those portions of the project could extend out until next spring, but the sculpture itself will be up here yet this fall, late summer.
Would that be some information that could be shared with the press or whatever, so they could at least give people an idea of what's going to be happening down there?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, next up, Resolution 59-16, approving amendment to Mitas contract with IDEA.
Well, as we talked about at our work session, Mitas is looking for an extension on the tax credit incentive from IEA. There's $2.4 million in tax credits, and they have to meet a total of 154 qualifying jobs. At this point, they're at 128, so they're almost there. The extension is, the logic behind that is, you know, when Mitas bought the building, they bought an existing building, it took them about two years or so to get the thing retrofitted and built to their needs so they could get up and get going. So this just gives them an extra year to be able to meet that job number, and I think we're all pretty confident that they'll be able to get to that point, so...
We have Mr. Fox here. Do you have anything to add to all this?
I think we covered it in the workshop. The only thing that's changed is the actual job number now is up to 132 instead of 128, so they're making progress.
Getting closer all the time. It's good.
Reason four.
I mean, Mitas knew some of these challenges going in with the buyout. I'm sure it changed a little bit, but they've done very well, and they're good corporate citizens.
Yeah, the local CFO, treasurer of Mitas, now Treleborg, Vladimir Dushanik, is over in Europe, meeting with the Treleborg people, so when he gets back on the 16th, we'll have a clearer indication of where they're going.
That's good. They've been a great addition to our area.
They've been a good, a very good corporate partner.
Good corporate citizen. I'd so move.
Click and call a roll.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Excuse me. Jaeger.
Aye.
Griesman.
Aye.
Okay, Resolution 59-16 is approved.
Thanks, Tim.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tim.
Thanks, Dan.
You can leave him.[804.97][804.97](laughing).
Consideration of the second reading of Ordinance 1095, amending section 50.07 of the Charles City Code of Ordinances for the purpose of permitting the posting of subsequent notices to abate in a conspicuous location on the property in the event the nuisance to be abated is the growth of weeds, grasses, or other vegetation. Discussion.
We've been talking about this for the last couple of months. We talked about it a little bit last year, actually, as well. Whenever we have a grass or weed nuisance, there's always so much time involved in far, as far as buying the nuisance, notifying the property owner, you know, notifying by mail, getting it cut, and all that, that we are looking for a way to expedite that process for, I guess you could say, repeat offenders. And so basically, what this change allows us is that once somebody for the growing season has been issued a notice for lawn grass, weeds, vegetation, any subsequent notice or violation after that throughout the growing season, we can just post a notice at the property and not have to go mail it and go through all that purpose. We can just post a notice and then go and cut the grass within, I think it's 48 hours, I think we said, so it speeds that up much, you know, much quicker. We can be able to get the grass cut, not have it grow out of control, and just makes the overall process work that much better.
The purpose of that is to get the nuisance alleviated, and if the property owner's paying attention, we can do it on a reasonable schedule.
We tried to talk Ralph into allowing us giving one notice, saying any subsequent, any time after this, we're not going to send you any more notices for this growing season, but Ralph didn't think that was fair enough. So we are going to give a 48-hour notice and post at the door that, yes, your grass is too long, it's time to cut it. So, but this does help a lot.
This really is hopes to, hopes to get some of the chronic offenders, you know, taken care of. This is not the run-of-the-mill, once-a-year type of person. This is, they know the system, they know they need to cut their lawns, this is for regular offenders of this process.
I'd so move for 1095.
Click and call a roll.
Malero.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Griesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Okay, the second reading is approved. We'll have the second reading.
Ordinance 1095, an ordinance amending section 50.07 of the Charles City Code of Ordinances for the purpose of permitting the posting of subsequent notices to abate in inconspicuous location on the property in the event of nuisance to be abated is the growth of weeds, grasses, or other vegetation.
Thank you. Consideration of the third and final reading of Ordinance 1093, amending section 91.05 of the Charles City Code of Ordinances by amending provisions pertaining to meter settings. Discussion.
Brad, do you want to talk about, yeah, thank you. Do you guys have a copy of the ordinance 1093 that Ralph sent over today, and Brad's going to explain what changed on it?
The prior resolution stated that the ordinance would only be applicable to new construction going forward, but that language was just included in the resolution and not the actual ordinance itself. So just to clarify and to include the applicability in the actual ordinance itself, we amended 9105 to include language that it would apply to all new construction. So it's not a substantive change. All we're doing is placing that applicability section of the resolution in the actual ordinance
Questions or discussion?
Basically, the idea behind doing this is that we want to have a shut-off valve on either side of the water meter. That way, when the water meter gets changed out, not only do we, you know, we currently require a valve on the supply side, you know, you just have to shut that off, but also to be able to shut off the home side, too, so all the water doesn't come draining out of the, out of the system and make a mess. So this is just kind of a better way of handling that type of situation. Thing can be easily done during, for nominal fee during new construction, was the idea.
Now, this is only geared towards new construction, the requirement. If an existing homeowner, or homeowner for an existing home is having their meter changed out, and they are requested to be done, would our people be able to do that for a fee? Or is this something they had to privately contract out?
That would be probably on the realm of our, I don't want to say capability, but responsibility.
I would encourage every homeowner to have this done. I've seen some, some issues where it's either for meter or otherwise, there's a lot of water throughout the house. You disconnect that, that meter, it's all coming back, and that would just resolve some, some water problems if you can take advantage of it while you can, but, so even though it's not required to for existing homes, I would encourage homeowners to do that.
This is not just residential properties. This would be any new construction, commercial, residential, whatever it may be.
That is correct.
So move.
Click and call a roll.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Griesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Okay, the third reading is approved. We'll have the third reading.
Ordinance number 1093, an ordinance amending section 91.05 of the Charles City Code of Ordinances by amending provisions pertaining to meter settings.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt and publish?
So move.
Click and call a roll.
Griesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
The ordinance is adopted and will be published. Thank you, everybody, on that one. Next up, consideration of motion to approve increase in library budget for fiscal year 2017. Discussion.
Well, we have a request from the library board to increase their annual budget by $12,500, and this is in relation to their completing the interviews for the library director position, and they're looking to make an offer and fill that position soon. That's the reason why we have it on the agenda right away tonight, is so we can consider this, so they can move forward with their, their process of hiring a library director. As you know, as the city council, we approve the overall budget to the library. How it gets divvied out and used specifically at the library is up to the discretion of the library board. So with that, we have library representation here tonight, so if anybody has any further questions or anything.
I know from time to time through our hiring process, we've found that we may be significantly lower than surrounding areas or competing markets. We've found that through water, wastewater, different things, as we've been down a person that we're significantly below. Do we know what the surrounding positions, do we have a range of their salaries?
If anybody is going to speak, they'll have to get up to the microphone and identify themselves.
Well, I guess I haven't really studied it in deeply as far as, I guess, comparisons with other communities around here. I, you know...
What was our present librarian being paid? What possible?
Forty-three, forty-five, I think it would have been this year, thereabouts. So somewhere in that, in that ballpark, so...
I believe she was at 46 for this fiscal year.
Identify your...
I'm sorry. I'm Heidi Worrell. I'm the outgoing library board president, and our librarian that just left was at about 46. We did look at some information statewide. Mr. Deers had given us some information from a survey, and we did find that we were significantly lower, also looking at jobs in the state. Indianola, a little bit bigger community, but similar staff size, significantly more than what we were, probably 50% more in wages than we were able to offer. So we know that to hire a candidate of the caliber that we're looking for, we are going to, to need to increase that, that wage.
Excuse me, Heidi, our present librarian was in the $46,000 area.
Yeah, I believe it was 46. Might even been just a smidge more than that.
That area, okay.
I think that salary range that we looked at was anywhere between 40 to 60, and now it's for towns for about $5,000 to $10,000.
With this increase that's being proposed, will there be other items in the budget that'll have to be reduced?
I do not believe so. I believe that with the increase that, that is being asked for, we should be able to hire the library director for where we believe they should be with the background that we need and not, not borrow from other areas.
So you're looking at a new wage salary in the $55,000 area?
Somewhere in that range, yes.
How will this affect the other employees of the library? Do they work on a percentage of the...
No, they, it's my understanding they do not. It's my understanding that typically, that when the wage increases are given for the city employees, they apply that same percent to the library employees, and, and our budget is increased for the salary by that amount. This year, I believe it was 2.75.
That's correct.
You've been now interviewing for applicants for this position?
We've been in the interview process since approximately April.
You have other applicants that are acceptable in the lower wage category?
Acceptable, they don't meet the qualifications that we're looking for. We are looking for somebody with a master's, somebody with previous supervisory experience, library experience, and we don't have anybody in, with those credentials that are in less than 55 or somewhere in that. We can hire some people without those items, or without those skills, probably in the mid-to-upper 40s. However, we don't get the, we don't get the experience that we're looking for, what we think our library and our community deserves.
Did the previous librarian have those skills that you were alluding to just now?
She came, and it's a little difficult for me to speak 100% accurate on that, but I believe she did have a master's, and she did have some supervisor experience. However, I don't believe she'd ever been a library director. She had worked in a variety of areas in library, brought a lot of skills, but had not been a library director. So whether she should have been moved up as we, as we went along, you know, hindsight being 2020, probably her, her wages should have been maybe increased as we went along. We didn't realize it, I guess, until, till she left, that maybe we were a little under...
Process.
Yeah, till we were a little bit, that we were a little under.
And that was kind of, to the point I was discussing, too, sitting on the personnel committee, that's kind of the experience we run into, is we've had a good fortune to have employees that are happy with their jobs and don't generally complain, and so we're just don't, we aren't investigating where we should be at some of those, and so when they do leave, it seems like this is a shock to us, but unfortunately, it's not. There are times where we are not in a competitive range, and sometimes we're going to lose valuable employees because of that. That's why I was asking if they, what kind of investigation was done on price ranges where we should be, and if we're not in that range, we need to change it. I just want to make sure that we've done all of our investigations that we can do to ensure that we're not just increasing to increase, but to increase because that's where it should be.
And the data that we have been able to obtain and secure does support that. There's only so much data. I don't know that there's a large database that I can go out and find every librarian salary in the, in the nation, but what we were looking at was communities, as, as Mr. Deers said, that were in that $5,000 to $10,000 population.
I think that's a very, very acceptable range.
As far as budget goes, Heidi, as, you know, going forward, I mean, you're looking, what we've got in front of us, $10,000 for salary and $2,500 for some moving expense, but the $10,000 is going to be ongoing from this point forward.
Correct.
So any thoughts, discussions, or whatever to handle that for future years, or...
Well, I guess I'm not, I don't know how we would raise revenue. The library isn't a revenue source. You know, I guess we would be continuing to ask the city for an increase in our, in our budget on an ongoing basis. I don't have any other suggestions short of potentially cutting materials or something of that nature. It's a, you know, it's a balancing act.
Right, right.
And I don't think, that is not the direction, I don't think, that, that I've gotten from anybody that they want to see that happen, that we should be cutting materials and benefits to the community, so...
The reality is...
So we're fairly hopeful that a lot of the capital expenditures on the building are coming to an end.
This is...
And one of the last things I know that's in the budget for this year is, is the VRF system replacement, the blower, so some of the work that needs to happen with the heating and cooling system, but aside from that, I think we're getting close to...
It's been a tough, tough couple of years on the building side.
She is addressed. Sorry, Dana.
The reality is that most of the cost of the library salaries is not...
True.
Well, the library isn't exactly as glamorous as we'd all hope it to be. It's one of those unsung heroes of the community, that it's, it's vital, and sometimes, as we've found, the, the right director can actually, having the right person in place can save expenses, you know, build revenues through different programs. It's having that initiative, having that right person in place, doesn't always work out that way, but that's really ultimately a goal of how to get revenue, is basically through different programs, that that director is able to produce.
And one option is grants. You know, I think it's a dangerous, grant is a, is a dangerous thing to count on for any sort of salary or fixed expenses, but we can certainly use that for materials and projects as those things come forward. So that would certainly be something, that's something that we've been inquiring of each of the applicants that we're interviewing, is what's their grant writing experience, and hope to have somebody that has that as well. So we are looking for, we're looking for somebody that comes with a lot to keep our library what we've all come to know it as, which is a very good library for a community our size.
Excuse me, the person you're looking at is coming from out east?
Mm-hmm.
The 14, 15 salary of our present librarian was $43,200, and you're looking to go into 55?
And that was 14, 15. And that was fourteen, fifteen, but I believe for fifteen, sixteen, she was at forty-six.
That's possible.
And then slated for another two point seven five percent increase. So we did budget that, so that's in there. So it would be an increase of forty-eight to approximately fifty-five.
Forty-eight thousand dollars.
From forty-eight to fifty-five, right?
Well, again, we grant money to the library and they spend it, and that's the way the law is set up. We understand that. I have a little hesitation of giving that much money. I don't mind the moving expense, I can understand that. We need twenty-five hundred, three thousand dollars for moving expense. But do we have people within that can be promoted?
Again, if we're willing to let them gain that experience at the library, they don't come with everything that we need them to.
Right, I understand. I have a problem with the whole thing, I mean, with the whole amount. I don't mind the moving expense, I know that happens. But if we grant five or six thousand dollars additional to the moving expense, I think that would be, should be able to cover the situation, and we can find out how we can handle it.
One question. Is the recommendation and the request that you were bringing before us a unanimous request on the behalf of the library board?
We did actually not discuss it with the full library board. It's been with the hiring committee. We have a hiring committee that will take a recommendation back to the, to the board that says this is the candidate we've looked at, but we can't really talk to the candidate until we know, we can't make an offer to a candidate until we know what our salary restrictions are.
Further discussion or questions?
Steve and Brad, does that discussion just now pose any problems for the whole process? As far as, you know, their board not having acted on it, or?
So my understanding is the process is you would get this additional salary. If it was approved, you'd get this additional salary, take it to your hiring committee. Your hiring committee would then propose an offer to your board, and your board would then act on it.
Correct. We would bring the candidate before the board. The board would approve the candidate, then we would be able to make an offer for salary. But if we, if we know we're quite a distance off, there's, there's not a point in bringing the candidate to the board.
Right.
And wasting everyone's time, essentially.
I'm just trying to make sure the process.
Right, and.
Come back and bite us all at some point, so.
And I.
A little contingent upon the library board's approval, recommendation.
I would consider making a twenty-five hundred dollar moving allowance and adding an additional four or five thousand dollars to the library budget for salary. Because I don't think we need to go the whole thing. I think that's quite a bit, and we've got to be a little tight on it.
How far out of sync are we price-wise? I mean, based on what we've seen, you know, I get what Jerry's saying, and I'm wondering if this ten thousand is basically the minimum you guys are looking to get into? Or is this, you guys want to be hot, you know, where, where does this put?
This would still not put us at the top of the range. This, you know, again, it's going to depend on the candidate's experience, the years in, in library, the degrees, all of those sorts of things. We can, we can hire somebody with, you know, and let them learn as they go along in the library, or we can hire somebody that comes with the skills and the experience that, that we're looking for. And there's a cost for that.
I guess, I guess my point is that, in reality, you guys could be, could be asking for a lot more money, but that maybe this is what you guys feel is the minimum amount needed to get into the game, essentially, to get the qualified candidate here. Actually, if you're, if we're only slightly out, you know, maybe just throwing five thousand would probably do it. But if we're so far out, unfortunately, you know, these big jumps are not fun. They're not fun for us at all. But we, we sometimes have to jump up into there, you know, to get, you know, we, with, I know, what was it? I believe it was water. I mean, we were, we were far out, and it was, it was a shock. You know, we don't always find out about these until it's upon us.
I, I did a little checking. And these are our fourteen, fifteen figures. And the fourteen, fifteen figures said that Charles City was at forty-three, two hundred, and you were now at forty-six, you think? So compare yourself accordingly. Mount Pleasant's with thousand, about a thousand population more than us was forty thousand. Dennison, eighty-three hundred, was forty-one thousand. Perry is at forty-three thousand. Charles City was at forty-three thousand on this survey, but actually it was forty-six in today's dollars. So we're, we're not high or low, we're in the middle. Decor, to be honest, here was at sixty thousand. So we're somewhere in the middle, but I think, I think we're jumping high. I personally would okay a moving allowance and okay a five thousand dollar increase in the budget for their expenses if they want to apply it to a librarian.
And I'm not trying to speak for or against, I just, I like qualifying. Numbers are quantifying even, now it's called qualifying. Those salaries, did those, what qualifications did those salaries include? I mean, that's kind of what really kind of comes down to, is they could hire someone at a lower level. You know, what, what criteria was involved with, with those current positions? I guess, I would like for us to have a lot more time to discuss this, to get these.
Didn't interview them, so I don't know.
That's just, what's our timeframe on this? I mean.
Well, I think they wanted to take action this week.
There's, there's a lot of questions as far as being able to justify. I, I, this, this doesn't shock me. I don't, I don't like it, but I'm not shocked by it because of previous situations.
This has come quickly to us tonight, as we said, we don't have a time to, didn't have a planning session on. That's fine, I understand your situation, you've got a goal. But I'm going to make a motion, we allow the moving expense plus five thousand dollars, or seventy-five hundred dollars to the library budget. That's all we can do. We can't tell them what to spend it for.
Is there a second to that? Just to keep the discussion going?
Right, just find out.
Not hearing a second, it dies for lack of a second. One thing, you've got the list, where's Waverly on that list?
Oh, let me see, Your Honor.
Because that's tending to become.
Well, while he's looking for that, I mean, to me, we hear about the other communities, but part of it is too, what do they offer in their libraries? What's their staffing?
Yeah.
What type of programs? I mean, there's so much stuff that we don't.
There's more than just salary. Waverly's not on this, on this list, Jim. Okay. I got thirty-three of them.
They'd be the next tier up, they're ten thousand plus.
And I'm not, I'm not really thinking we're speaking for or against, but they're just, it's, it's tough for us to make, you know, even these, even these small amount decisions, we like to have the extra information to be able to qualify our answers, saying, hey, we agree or we disagree, and here's why. And it's, you know, some of that extra information, we really kind of need to justify that price range. And even, like I said, I'm, I'm not shocked by this, but, you know, we need to be making these decisions with as much information as possible. And this is the kind of questions that we need answered, is what all goes along with those salaries to justify the price range? If that makes sense?
Again, Mike, the point is, they make the decision on the salary. We allow the money. So what the money goes for is not our decision.
No, but if they're.
It's up to them what they do with it, and we're just allowing an increase in the amount of the budget.
Mm-hmm. But if they're, if they are deciding to pay a certain amount of money for a low-end candidate, we could be throwing a high-end candidate into low-end funds, and we're not going to get them. There's a lot of, there's a lot more than just numbers.
That's not our decision. We just adjust the budget.
Further discussion, so far, there's no viable.
Heidi, would it do any good to, you know, since we can't seem to agree here? You know, we're having twelve-five as a request in front of us, and we're hearing seventy-five hundred, and that didn't fly. If the decision was to go ten thousand dollars total, you guys figured out, does that do any good at all? Or does that not give you any more room than what you've already got?
Well, again, I, you know, I think we can certainly, and actually, it will fall on the library director's shoulders to figure out how to, in so many words, rob Peter to pay Paul. So we'll spend less on this and less on this, so that we can pay their salary. We'll look at that. I don't know that that's, you know, I don't know that that's the direction that we, that's the best for the community, to take money from services and materials to pay salary. But what, is there anything else I could, you know, we, we have limited information. Jerry has a survey, I believe, I may have something like that. But as I mentioned, Indianola, yes, they're a little bit bigger community, but they have the exact same number of staff. They have the same number of hours, within maybe an hour a week. And they're hiring in a director at sixty thousand dollars annual, brand-new director.
Right.
Did ask for a master's. So I, I don't think that we're, I don't think that we're asking for, I recognize it's a, it's a very significant amount to the city budget, but I don't think we're asking to put our candidate or our library director at the top of any, any scales. We're just asking to get some more funds so that we can, you know, hire the best candidate possible for, for Charles City and the community.
I, I think it's, my opinion, they can speak for themselves, it's the wish of the council that this increase is, is used for the librarian and not for cutting other services to give the librarian a higher increase. So that's, to me, is kind of the issue, how much increase we have to have. So I think the library, number one, I think you do a great job, and doing a good service, but at what price? I'd hate to see an increase in the librarian over and above what the council allows for an increase in the budget to be used for a decrease in the services offered. So we, we're working on a compromise here, Heidi, somewhere that, that can be worked out. But, but.
And I won't know until we, you know, until we make an offer to a candidate.
No, but back up, if we get a twelve thousand dollar increase to librarian, we're looking at a three point seven five increase, three point seven five percent increase to our city personnel, we're getting out of whack. And I think that we need to, and I know your qualifications and so on, but we need to really adjust to what the community needs and what the community can provide.
So Delaney, back to your question, I certainly think ten thousand dollars, you know, I would, I would move forward with that number if, if we could obtain that and work as diligently as we can to, you know, secure this, this candidate. But I won't know until we, until we make an offer.
I'm just trying to look for some way to compromise here.
Sure, no, nope, and I, you know.
And same thing to Jerry's suggestion was, is, is a larger moving expense more to their, their favor and a slight increase? I, I don't have a problem with the dollar amount, I personally don't. I said, we've, we've been in this situation before. I just want to make sure that we're, we're, we need to be, you know, because everyone come, everyone wants a raise. You know, and we have to deal with it on an individual basis and justify each situation. And if we're out of line with being significantly lower, having a, having just as small of an increase could be potentially worse. I mean, we may set ourselves back a year looking for another person yet. I mean, I, I get where you come from, and I, I don't have a problem with the price. I just really, it makes our job easier if we have all the extra information. And I, I can't, you know, say, hey, get, get every single piece of information, but the more you give us, the easier it is for us to make that decision.
Further discussion or a motion?
So again, I guess I'd say, what kind of a timeframe do we have? I mean.
Sounds like they've got a candidate that they want to make an offer to. So I'm thinking their timeline is pretty short. I'm not trying to put words in.
Yeah, we were, as Mr. Deers said, we were hoping to take action this week. But if, if it takes longer, if they're, I guess, again, I need to understand what it is that I can come back with or present to Mr. Deers that he can bring back. Or our new board president, we're also in transition. There's actually, I'm actually not, I don't, I'm not the board president now, so.
And the information I gave her was, is a couple of years old.
Yeah.
So we could get that updated with a, with a newer version of that to see how.
Could we throw something on the?
But you're not going to know, like you mentioned.
Right.
You know, do they have a master's?
How many years of experience?
That's something that could be, that's something that could be asked.
Actually, I think the years of experience are on there.
Is it?
But there's a lot of things you, you don't know, so you kind of take it with a grain of salt.
And a telephone takes care of some of that. So, I mean, can we, can we throw on a special meeting, say, after the next planning session? Or as part of that, you know, it's a week away. Is that, is that out of line? Is that justifiable? I mean, I just.
Who is the current board president, Heidi?
Leonard Erickson. He just, my, my term ended, I believe, June thirtieth, and his term started July first.
You're three days out of your.
And I really was wanting to, you know, leave the library in good shape and have a director, but.
I made a motion that died for a second, so what do you guys want to do?
I'd move for a ten thousand dollar. I'm out.
And Delaney, can I clarify? You had a question. I think Steve commented on making that contingent upon approval by the library board of directors of the offer.
Right, right.
That ten thousand dollars would include the moving expense on?
That's ten thousand dollars for them to do whatever.
For their budget, they can do what they want with it.
Exactly.
I personally would like to see more of that go for moving expense and less for salary, because the salary compounds itself going forward.
And unfortunately, I don't think that's, I don't think that's going to work for this particular candidate. Comes with twenty-five years of, of high-level experience, so.
Is there a second?
I can move to that if we get enough general dumpsters.
There's no second?
Was that a second? No, okay.
Yeah, what?
I didn't know if that was considered a second or not.
I just would like more information. I'm sorry.
It didn't appear that we're going to have a majority approval this evening. That does not foreclose obtaining the additional information, and hopefully within a week. So that we can either, and I guess the possibility would be, if, if a week's time is critical in some way, to add a special meeting onto the planning session, if that were necessary to get this concluded.
Here's one thing I'd just like to comment on, as far as this. I know our liaison representative from the council that's on the library board is not here tonight, but I know I had a conversation with him, and he felt very strongly that this was the right move and the right thing to do, and that we should, you know, consider this. So, you know, we're all liaisons to different groups and things like that, and if we can't trust each other's recommendations and comments and things like that, then maybe we need to rethink the whole liaison process and that sort of stuff. And I guess, you know, if there were those conversations, we had concerns about information, we should have been voicing that just a little bit sooner. I know this is kind of quick here for a vote, but if those conversations were there, then we should have been getting around to doing that, so.
Okay, well, that's, that's where we're at at the moment. There is no action on this, this item. Miscellaneous correspondence.
Well, I put before you a letter or an invitation from MBS Farms to save the date for a open house-type thing that they're having on their farm. So there'll be more information coming. They sent that to me today.
Okay. City attorney's report.
Nothing at this time, Your Honor.
City clerk's report.
We will have a planning session on July thirteenth at seven o'clock. It's a Wednesday.
City administrator's report. Just wanted to thank all of our volunteers for a great Fourth of July weekend. It was a great festivities, no incidents, everything worked pretty smoothly. So it was just a really good weekend, so thank you to everybody that helped out with that. Our next workshop for next Wednesday, Trudy mentioned, we're going to be taking the first look at our solid waste contract with GEDRO, which is up for renewal, so we will be starting to look at that. We'll also have our memorandum of understanding, hopefully at a place where we can start looking at that for our RCPP grant that we got for our USDA award. And I guess that's really about it. I was going to mention, the mayor and I did attend that field day at the Borlaug Center last week, and got to talk a little bit about our RCPP project that we're be working on with the watershed projects. And so had a great turnout there of a lot of interest, a lot of interest. of interest. There's probably close to, there's over a hundred people in that room when I was there, and that was in the afternoon, but very, very good day of learning and building new working relationships, so, but other than that, I guess that's all I have for tonight.
Okay, thank you. Board and commissioner committee reports.
I do have one. I was in attendance at the Small Cities Conference about two weeks ago in Nashua, the folks that was water quality as well as wastewater for small communities. The biggest takeaway from that, I was very pleased, Charles City in itself is ahead of the game on a number of factors, whether through our, the watershed that we're participating in, the watershed district with Cedar River, as well as with our wastewater facility and the UV disinfectant, we're heading in on a lot of things. Small communities that are aware are having a number of problems, so it's good to be in that position. However, the DNR will be focusing on addressing a lot of those smaller communities and helping to get them through, because these are expensive items, and it's not something that they can easily just pay for, so it was a very good, very good conference, I enjoyed it.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
No move.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, or adjourned?